Great to have our young students in there doing it. They've done one of this thing really good, don't they?
Yeah, they do. Look at that.
All right. Next is our board.
I got them. To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Board of Education commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district and support district goals, and support board decisions.
All right, thank you. Since our last meeting, unfortunately, we've had two students pass away. One of those was from John Harden and Elise Lindner, Lindner? I get that right? And a Central Harden student, Brandon Chambers. So if you would, let's have a moment of silence for those two students and family. Okay, thank you all. In recognitions, and John Wright will lead us with the recognitions. We have a lot of nicely dressed students back here today.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, Mr. Chairman, you have a resolution of recognition for the student group, and then you also have the Stronger Together Resolution. So if you'll pass that, Mr. Chairman, we'll proceed.
I move we pass. You want us to do both of them?
Yes, ma'am, if you don't mind.
I move we pass both these resolutions. Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second to pass the resolution. All in favor, say your obvious thing, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to first bring up the John Harden High School JROTC Rifle Team. Let me tell you about these young men and women. They have, they're used to carrying trophies and hardware. They recently placed first in the 2019 Kentucky State Air Rifle Championships. This, the junior varsity team did. The varsity team placed second in the Kentucky Air Rifle Championships. The precision team from John Harden placed fifth. State titles are nothing new to John Harden High School. Over the 19 years of history of the program, John Harden has had at least 12 championship teams and seven teams that have finished the season as a state runner-up. At one time, the John Harden High School JROTC Air Rifle Team had won six consecutive state titles. Congratulations. We appreciate you all.
We appreciate the school board inviting us over and recognizing. We just came in second with the regional Seventh Brigade, which includes five states and over 500 schools. And one thing we didn't add that we won the Junior Olympic State Championship last year, too. Do we appreciate that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. You obviously do a great job of this, too.
All right, thank you, young men and women. All right, next is the Stronger Together Awards, and we'd like to bring up some more JROTC students. These young men and women are from North Harden High School. So, guys, if you all will come up, please. Did you notice how they all got up in unison there? They all got up together? The JROTC cadets from North Harden High School, recognizing them this evening because they are in charge of planning, organizing, and running the annual Sergeant Major Paul Gray JROTC Memorial Invitational Drill Meet. Sixty cadets run this large JROTC meet. Sixty-six schools attended this year from Kentucky, Michigan, Ohio, Tennessee, and Indiana. The North Harden cadets planned everything from setup and cleanup to parking and registration, drill competitions, robotics, academic competitions, hospitality, schedules, and scoring. Senior cadets ensure teams stay on schedule. The judges have the required equipment, the results are graded, and that their subordinate cadets complete their assignments and missions. This year, senior cadets completed this mission flawlessly and received many compliments from instructors from the visiting schools. These guys work like clockwork, Miss Morgan, as you know, and is a fine, well-oiled machine thanks to their leadership and their hard work. So congratulations, guys. We appreciate you all. Any parents of these students here? Wave your hand. They work hard as well, so. You want to say anything about this?
Yes, if you don't mind, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to just tell you a little bit where they're going. I've been here 14 months. I came to this board last year with a group of seniors that I really barely got to know, but you kind of fall in love with them. Fell in love with this group, hardworking, as he said. They ran this event that was just flawless. So if I, when I mention any, just please step forward. Kiara McFadden, she is going to beauty school right after high school. Kai Hill, he's going to University of Kentucky, and he's in the, going to join the National Guard. Tashante Paget, she is going to the University of Kentucky and joining the National Guard. Jackie Arnold. My one that's going to the Marines this year. Jacob Way, going to WKU this year. Cody Harper, joining the Army Reserves right after high school. Danielle James, joining the National Guard, going to University of Kentucky. Yosef Morgan, going to the US Navy. David Goldsmith, United States, or Kentucky Army National Guard and WKU as well, and WKU. And then Max Kitson, United States Army. Thank you.
Great job.
Great program.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, for your hard work.
They've worked, and they're going to continue to do well.
All right, next, we'd like to bring up our community HCS Stronger Together Award winners. And this is the Suzanne Dennis family. So Dennis family, if you'll come, come forward, please. This is Tim Dennis and his family. The Suzanne Dennis family supports and loves the Harden County Schools family like it is their own. Mrs. Dennis was a beloved, respected, and admired teacher at Lakewood Elementary School and taught in the Harden County Schools for 24 years and was a teacher for 37 years. She passed away on March 13th, 2017, on her way to school. Since then, her family continues to provide that same love and devotion to the students of Lakewood Elementary, the same that Mrs. Dennis did. Last week, on the two-year anniversary of Mrs. Dennis's passing, her family brought treats and smiles to the staff and students at Lakewood Elementary School on Clifford Carts. The carts were decorated with memorabilia from the famous book series Clifford the Big Red Dog, which happened to be Mrs. Dennis's favorite set of children's books. On a day that marked such a tragic loss, they showed their love and concern for the wonderful people at Lakewood Elementary School by reaching out to them. Harden County Schools will always treasure the Dennis family, and we will always consider you guys to be part of our own. Thank you. Thank you for everything. All right, next, we have two employee awards, and I goofed and did not order a plaque for the first, for the first ones, but you'll get your plaque, I promise. So our Buildings and Grounds Crew, come on, come on up, guys. There's obviously not one member of the HCS family that is more important than another, but without these men and ladies standing in front of us, I'm not sure how far we'd make it in educating our students and what we do every day for students. This is the HCS Buildings and Grounds Crew. We brought them here today to recognize them for their hard work with the Early Learning Academy. As you all know, as you, as the board knows, the Early Learning Academy was, is in two places, which it's kind of a daycare center for our staff and for students from ECTC. One location is housed at College View. The other location is housed at North Park Elementary School. And these guys remodeled those places on their own. They did a remarkable job. We didn't have architects, we didn't have contractors, and these guys just went in, enrolled, and did it. And never asked why, never complained, and then went in there and did a remarkable job. Some other things I wrote down about what they do, their daily work of keeping our students safe in a safe and functioning working, learning environments. They remove snow. That's a chore in its own. And of course, many, many other tasks, but just their early work in early mornings, and they're staying after work to do so many things to ensure our students have safe and functioning facilities. We appreciate you all greatly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To talk about what this group does is really difficult because there's so many things that go on behind the scenes. It's really hard to put it all into words, but there's so many things, like, just like John was saying, there's so many things that happen on a day-to-day basis that the people in the schools don't see. But they help us to run efficiently, they help us to run safely, and they make it a safer place, a more comfortable place for the students. And I couldn't do anything, we couldn't do anything without them. And I wanted to thank, I'm glad I had this opportunity in front of everyone to thank you all for everything that you do. So Mr. Donnie Morgan, Donnie Ashlock, Bruce Daniel, Greg Halip, Mike McGrew, Dean Kuhn, Bradley Skies, Steve Carver, and Ms. Kathy Cross, thank you all for everything that you do. I'm going to give them a round of applause. Mr. Chairman, I will admit, the next recognition, it is just a little bit of a fib, and we'll change it before you, before you guys vote on the minutes of today's meeting. Ms. Diane Jacoby, would you come forward, please?
Oh, my goodness.
It says on your resolution, we're recognizing Josie Crew. Josie certainly deserves this award, but she's not going to get it tonight. She's going to kill me tomorrow. I may be, I may be dead tomorrow. Diane Jacoby is the... Diane Jacoby is the Executive Assistant to the Superintendent, and she's retiring on March 31st after more than 25 years of service to this district. She has served four superintendents in that time. She has also gained an incredible amount of institutional knowledge about the district. She knows the HCS policy and procedure manual like the back of her hand. Her patience with those who call the superintendent's office seeking assistance is impeccable. She has brought, she listened to some lady on the phone for 71 minutes last year. She has brought many Board of Education members, like you guys, principals and directors up to speed, and shared information about successful and not-so-successful endeavors before their service to the district begins. She works beyond the hours of the clock to ensure the superintendent's office is ready to host its next event or that a school has what it needs to help their children succeed. Although she doesn't work daily with children, she, well, does with me, so I guess that counts. The students of this district are advantaged because of Mrs. Jacoby's determination and never-quits attitude. We will certainly miss Mrs. Jacoby and every ounce of her spunk. We truly are HCS Stronger Together with Diane Jacoby. Thank you.
And how many board members? You said four superintendents. How many board members?
I'm sure. I said my county was like 19, so it's probably close to 30.
Good. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My work here is done.
That's a big job in itself.
She's, straight on me, she's told me this is the way it'll be when I walk through the door the first day, and that way it is.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. And focus on academics. Mr. Rick Sutton, we want to take care of that, boys.
Before I turn over here to Lakewood Elementary School, Mr. Jewell, just want to talk about a few things. These kids can probably talk to you about the, about the race. You guys answering short answer, extended responses, and highlighting your race. You guys did that down at Lakewood, didn't you? That's right. Just want to talk to you about some of our processes we're doing here, Harden County Schools. In the month of January, we all did the Race Month, stands for Restate, Answer, Sight, and Explain. That's where they take a short answer, extended response in the area of reading or math, and they respond to it in written form. We try to encourage them to use their content vocabulary. So in this process, these are just a few student samples. If you've been in our schools, over 9,000 students in grades K through 8 went through this process. And we're building a process where kids can learn it and move it on to the next grade level and keep improving it. So we're proud of that. The last two months, we've been focused on on-demand writing. As I promised, we would move this process all the way down to third grade this year. We had kids in grade three through eight in the past two months respond to an on-demand prompt, and we had over 7,200 students respond. And we talk about two words, quality and quantity. And that's what we're starting to see out of our kids in the form of writing. They're writing five to six paragraphs in 30 to 40 minutes, and it's, it's quality work. Students are peer assessing. I was over in New Holland this morning, they had 90 kids in their cafeteria working productively together, peer assessing their piece, highlighting, giving feedback, rewriting to a three or four. Been co-teaching at Bluegrass Middle School twice in the last week. Those students are following through with the highlighting process, peer assessing. Appreciate those teachers there. Appreciate all the principals and all the teachers for helping us make these processes work because it is Harden County Strong. It's us doing it together, and these kids are a big part of that. So thank you all for what you are doing as students and helping us follow through these processes. Look forward to talking more about our foundational skills we've been focusing on for the past year and a half. We'll get more of that in April. But tonight, we thought while we have so many people, we put on a little presentation for you. So I'm going to turn over to Mr. Jewell, and I'll talk about one of the clubs and organizations he does with the music and the arts down there at Lakewood.
This is the Lakewood Elementary School Ukulele Club. We've been meeting about once a week since about October to now, you know, weather permitting. We did miss a few in there when we had all of those subsequent snow days, but they're very dedicated kids, and they take their ukuleles home, they practice, they extend their own ukulele skills by looking up different resources to do on their own without me. They, they come to me every time we start a new rehearsal and say, hey, I learned a new finger-picking pattern. And I'm like, well, can you write that down for me? Because I've never heard of that one. So... So they've gotten a lot out of this, and so have I, and I'm, I'm sure they're excited and ready to go. They're very proud of their work, and I am, too. And so without further ado, let's, let's get to it.
Thank you all for coming tonight to pass, and for the hour starts on Elementary Schools. You wonder why we have great bands in Central Harden, North Harden, John Harden? They get their passion right here at the elementary level. Thank you for still, Mr. Jewell. Thank you.
All right. I think we should just let them stay and forget the rest of the meeting. Recognition of visitors. John, have anyone signed up to speak? No one? Okay, thank you. Construction updates. We had JRA and Tommy Gum from Alliance with us today. They gave us the bids that were on the new Lincoln Trail Elementary and also East Harden site work. And I'm assuming that we have pretty much told them today that sometime here tonight, on later in the agenda, we're going to pass a resolution to send it on to KDE to get their blessing on it. But bids came in a little over what the architect's estimate was, and of course, our bidding process usually takes place a few months after figures are in. And so we were around six, a little over 6% above what the architect estimated, but personally, I like that because I think bidders take architects' numbers sometimes and puts them, and goes to the bid table with it. So if we hold that number a little lower and we're over sometimes, I feel like we're better off. Maybe not, but it is a guideline that they have to use, and so...
Well, the, the thing that encouraged me was that the per-square-foot cost was about $25 under the normal right now, so...
KDE rate, yes.
So we...
$229 a square foot is what the school came in, and that's...
About 250 is what the average is, isn't it? Or 240?
240, 250, yeah. Yes, ma'am.
That, that was good. We had a lot of bidders.
Packed house.
This, this room was full, and that's, it's been unusual. We haven't had the bidders in the past that we really wanted to get out here. So I think architects, construction manager, I think they worked on that. We do have some bids that's come in, and there's, I think, one in the group that's maybe an out-of-state firm, but I don't hold that against them. I mean, you know, they have a perfect right to come up here and bid. Everyone can go bid wherever they want to, and they'll be under the same restrictions that any local or whoever, you know, we do like to have local bidders, and we had a good group, so... Maybe their pencil needed to be stuck in the sharpener a little bit, but anyway, we had a good group of bidders. So that's pretty much the report. I think hopefully by the next meeting, we're thinking KDE will have approved it or disapproved. It'd be back to us. But the next meeting, we should be able to start moving dirt at Lincoln Trail, and the other sites going to fall right in behind on the earthwork. So we don't have the bid documents on the new East Harden yet, but we will have them probably by next month. Yeah, I think April 11th was when they were shooting for to bid that job, so if you know any contractors that wants some work, if they're qualified, they need to get on the bid list because it won't be long till April 11th. We are using the construction manager this time. It's the first time, maybe since I've been on the board, that we've gone back with a construction manager, but we're trying this route, see if we can get more control over the quality that goes into school. And I feel like that we've got a good one out there working for us right now. Okay. Anyone else want to comment on the school sites or so forth? All right. We're down to consideration of the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we're approving several things that are pretty much normal for us every month. North Middle School Symphonic Band to travel to Washington, DC. These will all be commercial carriers. Approval for Central Harden Beta Club to travel to Oklahoma City June the 18th through the 22nd. And we're amending the 2018-19 school calendar to use bank time for students only. That's for students only. And that way, that will get our graduation dates. I didn't write those down. You got those? Go ahead. You want to tell us?
Harden County High School graduation will be May 24th. North Harden High School will be May 31st. John Harden High School will, I'm sorry, North Harden High School will be May 31st at 7:00 PM. John Harden High School will be June 1st at 11:00 AM. Central Harden High School will be June 1st at 6:00 PM. And Mr. Wright will have the... And Mr. Wright will have these on our website immediately following this approval. Once a motion is made, we will post those on our website. Our high schools will let the seniors know this as well, so...
The GED graduation is set at 7 o'clock at Central?
Yes, ma'am.
And should we have another foot of snow, and it lasts for a week? Subject to change. Joe says no more snow, so I'm sure he's right.
I believe this time, last year, we had approximately maybe a foot of snow. That went away very quickly.
Okay. Maybe it'll fall on Friday night and be gone on Monday morning.
Perfect.
Okay, and also on the consent agenda, we're approving the monthly financial reports, orders of treasures, school activity fund balance reports. And we're approving an unexecuted owner-contractor agreement and purchase orders for the new East Harden Middle School. And also the same for Lincoln Trail. We're approving the BG1 financial page revised to accept the bids for Lincoln Trail Elementary as bid, and that was part of the process. We've got to go back to get approval from KDE since it was slightly over the amount we thought it might be. And there's a $500 donation for project graduation at Central Harden, John Harden, and North Harden.
Did they ever ask us to increase that?
Now that you've mentioned it, I feel sure they will.
$500 from forever.
Yeah, it is.
Mr. Wells? You heard it.
That's a nice, nice thing.
Well, that's a good event.
That's an excellent event.
We need to support that as well.
Yes, it is. And since Mr. Wells is back there, I want to congratulate the John Harden boys on their venture to the state tournament. We're always proud to see our students in state competition. They came up a little short, but somebody had to lose, and that's fine. A loser sometimes is a great winner, so let's just leave it that way. All right, and all the human resources and site-based council and meetings and so forth are on here, we're gonna approve. Any corrections, additions, or anything the board member wants to remove?
I will move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other comments? Okay.
I don't think those people out there know how loud they are.
If not, we're gonna vote on it. All in favor of motion, second, five, a saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And that takes us down to action items. Anything on the action items? New business. Any new business?
No, sir.
Anyone wants to bring it up? You ought to want to go watch the ballgame, I understand. Superintendent's report would make this long, would you?
Not on your life. First and foremost, the local planning committee has been meeting. We are trying to find the date that we can have 100% of the members of the LPC to meet before scheduling that with spring break and spring sports coming up. That is difficult, but I do want the public to know there will be no changes of any schools for the next school year. There will be no change of venue for schools, so if you are in Lakewood's area, please go and sign up for early registration with preschool and kindergarten. I believe that will be on April 12th. And all of our schools, Cecilia Valley, Radcliffe, North Middle School, all of those will stay in place. So we just want to get that word out, so if parents want to know where to go, please just contact your school and give them your address, and they will be able to assist with that. But there will be no changes of venue for our schools next year. Next, I wanted just to share, we will be going paperless this year as much as possible, but we really need our parents to have a parent portal account. If your student has one, that does not count for you, but you will be registering your students online, and that way you can assist us in making changes. So our kindergarten students this year will be the first group to go paperless. So I think we have a young lady back here who's going to start kindergarten, and so she will be one of our first folks to do that. So again, please go in and sign up for that parent portal. The attendance clerk at each of our schools can help you with that. Finally, you will notice on social media that we have a shirt that our preschoolers and kindergarten students are wearing home that says, "Read to Me." And we have several families who have taken the opportunity to sit down, put their cellphones down, get out a book, and read to their children. We have one of a four-year-old reading to a newborn baby. I'm not sure what the story actually said, but it was something about bears. So if you get a chance to look on social media at that, but again, we cannot encourage our parents enough to please read to your children. It is the greatest indicator of success when they start school. So take that opportunity to create some memories and take some pictures and share those with us. Thank you to Ms. Jacoby, who we recognized earlier for creating those shirts and making those shirts for us to send home with our preschool and kindergarten students throughout the district. That is it, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right, we need to have an executive session for our student hearing tonight, so...
Do you need that motion now?
Whenever you all are ready, we're ready.
Somebody else want to make it? I think I've made every motion.
That's perfect. It's easy minutes when you do that.
I'm moving we go into executive session for a student hearing.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second that we go into executive session. All in favor, second, five, a saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This will actually conclude our meeting. There will not be any votes taken after that will be out in the open, our public. So any of you all would like to leave, this basically is the end of the meeting. Not, you can stay till we come out of executive session, and we'll do the same thing, we'll have a motion adjourned. Appreciate y'all coming out tonight.